Okay. Good evening, I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 20th, 2020. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 dated March 20th, 2020 at 8:40 PM. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier, the lady to my immediate left. She's recording an audio version and four of her government TV, Alex Mello and his crew, who are not physically in this room but are outside, are recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. So no one in the room says it? I don't know if anybody out there, no one's raising their hand? Present this evening, albeit some remotely, are permanent members John Frank III, Attorney Carolyn Marasette, Dan Dupea, and virtually or through Zoom is permanent member Jim Clarkins, and alternate members Joe Pereira and Ricky Sahadi. Brittany, have all petitions been considered, been properly advertised, and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the zoning board of appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A is amended?
Yes.
I declare the August 20th, 2020 scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the City of Fall River, open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the zoning board of appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters and at the end of the meeting. I disclose that an official cop-- so we'll have citizen input at the end of the meeting. There's a sign-up sheet in the back, or we can let you come in through the Zoom, and it will be for the specific purposes of talking about not necessarily a specific item on the agenda which you will have an opportunity to discuss, but this is just for general zoning issues. I disclose that an official copy of the four of the zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that a new recodified edition approved by the planning board and city council in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 50, now with its orange or whatever color, not yellow, is the last, is the current official version. Are there any questions before we begin? Okay. So, agenda item number one, Mario D. Reyes Ramos, 565 Broadway, Lot G1220. This is a special permit request pursuant to Sections 8624, 425, 426, to convert the existing two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling in the R4 district. Lot size 5,030 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at SciTech Engineering with addresses here in the city as well as Dartmouth. As the chairman stated, we're here with regards to the real estate at 565 Broadway. The property owner is Mario D. Reyes Ramos. It is an existing two-family structure in an R4 two-family district. In the R4 two-family district, the required frontage is 75 feet, and required area is 6,000 square feet for the first unit and an additional 2,000 square feet for the second unit. That's what brings us to 86424, that the existing use on this size of a parcel is pre-existing non-conforming use, because it does not meet the area and frontage requirement for a two-family district. And what 86424 does is it allows us to come before you through a special permit, asking to extend or expand that existing non-conforming use when you find it that the expanded use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. About a year ago, the property directly to the north on Oliver Street at the corner, 555, you'll see is an existing three-family dwelling on a parcel of 4,557 square feet. At that time, we filed the same petition where it was allowed to expand that structure, not outward, inward, because it did have an additional floor to contain a three-family dwelling, and in that instance, we were able to add some off-street parking to ensure that the new expanded use would not be more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. Similarly to that petition, on this petition, you'll see in your package, there's a photograph of the building that clearly shows that we have a three-story structure. Mr. Reyes Ramos purchased his property only in June to find out when he went to file for the building permit to renovate the building, because there is somewhat of a third unit already on that attic space, that it was not listed as a legal two-family, and the building inspector sent him in my direction to try and find him some relief so that he would be allowed to renovate this structure and allow that legal third unit to exist on the third floor. There is an existing garage on the property that does provide for one off-street parking space, and then there was one off-street parking space in front of that as well. On this petition, we have committed to creating three additional off-street parking spaces for a total of five that would now service this proposed three-unit building. If you look around the surrounding neighborhood, you'll see that it's predominantly three fives on the, directly to the south of us, there's two threes on one lot. So everyone is right around that three-unit to five-unit building on a similar-sized lot that we have now. I think clearly with the expansion of the parking spaces on the property, I think it's clear that it would not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use, which is two units with only two parking spaces. If you have any specific questions regarding this property itself, or what the owner would be doing with the building, I'd be more than glad to answer those questions.
Dan, I have a question concerning the parking, and I think I'm going to need the chairman's help on this as far as the legal interpretation. When it's a two-family, the use of the driveway is allowed. Now, that driveway is not wide enough that a car can pass without backing out, and my reading of Section 86444, parking and loading spaces other than those required for single two-family dwellings shall be so arranged as not to permit the backing of vehicles onto any street. And it would appear to me that there's no way that those cars can get in and out without backing out with that narrow of a drive.
I can respond.
Go ahead, Dan.
Again, with regards to the parking, the existing parking condition is also a non-conforming condition. We're required by statute to have two off-street parking spaces for each unit. That would be a total of four, which they currently don't have on the site. So again, with this expansion and the creation of these additional spaces, is an expansion of a non-conforming use by special permit. The section of zoning with regards to off-street parking that Mr. Clarkins is referring to is with regards to new construction projects. Existing parking is exempt from any other type of parking requirement. There are many properties in the city now that everyone backs out onto their street. And in any of those instances where that happens, they are exempt from that other section of zoning.
That's for the, that's for the existing ones, but for the newly created unit, you're now, you now have to get a waiver from us on the special permit as the condition--
Well, on the same special permit of expanding the non-conforming use.
But I just want to make sure Jim understands that the existing is non-conforming.
Correct.
The expansion is looking for a special permit to include that parking, the additional three parking spaces.
That's correct. And what happens is this is a family-owned building, and if you grew up in the city in a tenement, you clearly understand the hierarchy of parking in a driveway where you can't get by one vehicle. I was woken up many mornings, you know, if you're the last one in, you have to be the first one up, and that didn't happen all the time. So--
The garage is going to be used for parking?
Excuse me?
Will the existing garage be used?
Yes, yes, yes. So there will be a total of five parking spaces. Again, two now, the garage and the space in front of it, and we'll be able to add easily the additional three. Yes, it is an inconvenience when you have to tell someone, you know, within your dwelling unit, you need to move your vehicle so that I can get out. But that's, that's the City of Fall River and off-street parking. That's the way that it works.
But how do we determine that there were only, that there were not four spaces there before?
There, there were no parking spaces striped at all, so that technically there's only one in front of the garage in that existing driveway.
Did you hear that, Jim?
Yes, I did. I heard.
So there will now be painted designated four spaces in front of that garage. Exactly what we did to the property to the north and what we've done on many other properties in the city.
The additional unit is going, everything's happening within the confines of the building.
Yes, there is no expansion of the structure itself. That's why technically we don't fall under 425 or 426.
So the new construction's going, will be subject to, if it's granted, will be subject to inspection and--
Absolutely, and a building permit. Certainly. And again, the board, with regards to the parking, the board can also easily make the determination, and the argument is there as well, that even if no additional off-street parking was being proposed, that the expansion of this with one additional unit would not be substantially more detrimental. Would you, could you say that it's not more detrimental? I don't know if you could go that far, but you could easily say--
But that's going to be up to the board to make the determination.
Exactly. But I'm saying, it doesn't rely just on the parking. There is merit to the case even without the additional parking.
Yeah, the only issue was where you raised it as a major point in favor of that, that--
But Jim, you could also make the argument that it's in the R4, it's already a two-family, it's a conforming use, they're looking to expand it.
What's a non-conforming use?
Yeah, but like the parking requirements change--
Right, but we don't meet the area requirement--
No, no, but the use, the use of the building--
Of the building itself, yes.
The use of the building as a two-family is conforming. The expansion of it now brings it outside of the conformity of the use. The dimensional requirements are where the non-conformity exists.
Right, so you, you wouldn't be allowed that two-family use on a lot of this size.
That's correct. But that's what, that's what I'm trying to explain to Jim, that if he says it's already and that's it, and you don't want to go, he has the option of doing that, that it doesn't necessarily mean that it's substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Okay. Anyone else, is there anyone else with any questions? Dan? No, we're going to get to who's in favor, who's-- Carolyn?
Dan, if you can explain, I mean, the use right now is conforming, the two-family, the three-family is not conforming. How is it that the dimensions, are you arguing, are non-conforming? It doesn't have to be whether it's residential, business--
The, the past interpretation has been, when we look at a property, is the property conforming or non-conforming? This structure is non-conforming due to setbacks, it's non-conforming due to lot size. So it's non-conforming property. It's not, it's not 425, it's not 426, where we're dealing with a non-conforming structure. This is a non-conforming use of land with regards to the size of it and the number of units in it. This is clearly, it doesn't differentiate between to what extent or under what guideline is it considered non-conforming. This is a non-conforming use of land, period, whether it's got one unit on it, two, or 10. Technically, it's in a two-family district, but you can't get to the two-family district unless you have 8,000 square feet of land and 75 feet of frontage. We don't have that. Again, exactly the same interpretation that in June of 2019, the abutto to the north received the same special permit identically. And that was the same interpretation at that point in time, and we've done it in a number of places.
Well, the fact that we've done it before and it's not precedent-setting doesn't mean that we have to--
I understand, I understand.
No, I just want to be clear, that you're saying that, and I don't know who's listening, so I want to make sure that they know that it's--
This applicant--
Non-precedent, it's not precedent-setting, it's a case-by-case basis. This is a existing two-family use that's in conformity, the building is not in conformity, which makes it non-conforming. I think you can hear me through this stuff. Okay. There, I don't want to complicate things, but I guess I do. There was a recent case that just came down, I don't know whether you saw it, the Comstock case?
No.
Came out of the appeals court. It was recently decided, issued August 3rd, 2020. It was from the appeals court. Varno, Milky, and Desmond were the judges, and it talks about the non, pre-existing non-conforming residences, and they talked about, boards are empowered to issue special permits along the reconstruction of pre-existing non-conforming residents that would increase existing non-conformity so long as they find, the board, that the reconstruction would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so that standard continues. So that's kind of where we are, and that case kind of reinforces 40A Section 6 interpretation and also our own ordinance. I don't know if that, that assisted at all, Carolyn?
Yes.
John Frank? Any questions? No? Jim Clarkins, are you?
Yeah, I'm set at the moment.
Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, of course. Identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Dan Brady. I live at 560 Broadway, which is right across the street.
560 Broadway, right across the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
My question, you said it's family-owned, is it going to be occupied by the family?
Yes, it's, it's my understanding that, and I think I alluded to that before, with regards to the parking issue, why it wouldn't be such a great concern, because it is going to be a family-occupied building.
Allude to it.
Right, I mean, there's, there's no guarantees that, that anything like that would happen. However, you can see Mr. Reyes Ramos's address is 565 Broadway, so he lives there now.
No one lives there.
Well, that's his mailing address. He just purchased the property in June and was intending on renovating it, and then was told, you need to go to the zoning board of appeals, before we'll give you the permit for renovation.
Let me, let me just add something further. Who owns it and whether they're going to live there is not, is not one of the components for the board to consider, but I appreciate your question.
It really should, because it does--
Statutorily, statutorily, that's not one of the components. I know we should think of lots of things, but we're kind of limited in the scope of what we can ask and where we're going.
Okay. I am opposed to the parking. Parking has become a huge problem, especially since 555 Broadway. Just so you know, both 565 and 555 have been unoccupied for years. So all of a sudden, them being occupied with two families, which, what they're zoned for is a big change in the neighborhood, adding a third floor is a huge change to the neighborhood. As far as, you said, there's been no addition to the footprint, but they just built a huge deck or something off the back. I don't understand, and it blocks one of the garage, technically the garage is a two-car garage, but this is in one of the stalls. I don't know how in that little teeny yard you would be able to turn, you know, if they were to pave the yard for parking, I don't know how you would be able to do that, number one, and number two, that's another thing, you know. All of Fall River shouldn't be paved.
I understand that. The parking, I think--
If I can respond quickly.
Go ahead, respond.
As I stated before, we're only utilizing one parking space in the garage, not, not a two-stall garage. So if, if in fact a deck has recently been built, I don't know--
That was going to be my next question, because you've got the thing stamped.
We filed the, we filed the plan back in, actually did the plan in June, filed it in July. So I know at least one door is going to be open, and whatever decision this board grants, and if it's in the positive, will require that at least one vehicle space be remaining in that existing garage. We're not expanding any pavement, so again, as the gentleman had stated, not all of Fall River needs to be paved. We're not adding any pavement. We're going to be parking, we're going to be striping the existing paved driveway for those three additional new spaces.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear any, I did, yes, sir.
So it is, it's a single-lane driveway.
Well, that's what he said, that's what I understood. You were talking about turning.
Well, I assume this is, I mean, he said he's going to add more parking spaces--
No, they're all going to be in a line.
--and, I mean, we have three-car driveway side by side, if that works, one person can get out without everyone moving, and maybe the family's going to be living there now, but they're not going to always, and that's not always going to work. And, you know, the same with 555 Broadway, and we came to zoning, and they said, you know, we have two spaces, and they do, we have two garage spaces, and those are, those are never, ever used, you know. So there's a ton of cars. My understanding is that he is planning on putting some additional parking, I don't know how, but even the tenants next door, which he represents, I spoke to them the other day, they're complaining that they have no place to park.
Okay, are they here?
You know what? There's a misconception. I spoke to all these, all these people, and they think they have to own the house to come to these meetings, and I keep telling them, you do not have--
Well, we're glad that you came. No, I'm glad that you came, because you're in the neighborhood. We're hearing from somebody who lives there.
I've lived here since 1990, and I'd like to try and, you know, there is zoning, and I haven't seen zoning disapprove any additions, you know, additional units in this neighborhood ever, which has become quite frustrating.
Okay.
I'll be honest, I got an inheritance many years ago to rent out my third floor, and I don't do it.
You got it approved or you got it denied?
Mr. Chairman?
I got it, it was approved.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Chairman.
I, I'm-- Yes, Jim?
Just make sure that those that are commenting could speak up with a mask, and it gets a little harder to hear.
Okay.
Understood.
Is there a, is there a microphone available?
I don't know if there's a micro--
There's a microphone available.
Okay. So did, I guess we can use this one.
Yeah, you can use the last one.
We can, you, did you hear anything the gentleman said, Jim?
I, I think I picked up almost all of it.
Okay. Because maybe what we'll do, if that's a problem for those of you listening via Zoom, if that microphone at the end is working, and maybe Alex is monitoring this, maybe we can set a microphone up that they can hear. Okay, maybe Brittany's going to take care of it. Okay, that's good. Thank you. All right, good. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we've heard who's in favor, we've heard who's opposed. Any, any discussion on the motion? Any, we have to have that finding if we think we're going to go forward with it. If not, if we can't get the finding that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, then it can't go forward and the petition fails. If we find that it is, it shall not be more substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use, then we can go forward and figure out if we're going to grant the special permit. So--
Mr. Chairman, our move that we find that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood--
Okay, so Jim Clarkins makes a motion to have a finding that this proposed change shall not be more substantially detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. Do I have a second? John Frank? No. Dan? Carolyn? Okay, so that part of the hearing, to bring it forward on a special permit, we don't have the required vote, so to grant Jim's motion, can I get a motion that this particular extension is detrimental, more detrimental to the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood, and therefore we'll have a vote that says, no, we can't go forward? Carolyn?
Carolyn's motion that this would be--
More detrimental to the neighborhood. Second, Dan Dupea. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor? Carolyn, yes. Dan Dupea, yes. John Frank, yes. Jim Clarkins?
No.
No? Chairman aside, yes. So four to one, that petition is denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two, Brandon Aruda, 178-180 Mott Street, Lot F183. Special permit request pursuant to Section 86, Floor 23B, to subdivide the existing 7,086.5 plus or minus square feet parcel into two lots, leaving an existing residence on each in the R4 district.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering. This evening on behalf of Brandon Aruda, who is the property owner of the real estate at 178-180 Mott Street. As you had read into the record, this is a request for a special permit under 86423B, which allows us to separate two existing structures on a singular property if they've been in existence prior to 1954. You'll see in your package, there are assessors' cards that confirm the date of construction. Prior to that date, we have an existing three-family dwelling at 178, and in the rear of it, 180, again, identically similar to the property to the north of us. As you can see, there is a pinch point between the existing garage and the existing three-family of six feet. So what we've done is divide that evenly into three and three, and create the dividing property line coming up through that area in that location. We would then extend further eastward to allow a backyard area for what we are calling parcel one, splitting the difference again between the rear of 178 and the front of 180. I think this is about the best reconfiguration that you can come up with, with these two structures, allowing the existing driveway and existing garage to be maintained and occupied with parcel two. We looked at some other ways of trying to deal with that situation, and we really couldn't unless we were able to cut out parcel two and have zero frontage for it. So we thought that it was better to make sure that both had adequate frontage, and off-street parking in the garage would go along with the one family in the rear. Again, no increase in total number of units, no increase in on-street parking. What's happening on, out there right now is what will happen and continue to happen. It's a pretty straightforward application, but if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Would be separate utilities?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
And is the owner planning on a fence or no fence?
No, I mean, what we've done in, in past practice, again, you'll see I've shown a little dashed area here, which there'll be an easement that straddles that lot line, three feet on either side, and the last view that we had put through was that no fencing is to occur anywhere in that narrow point. If they had wanted to put up a fence, you know, dividing them with that 34-foot line, maybe they could, but if the board wanted to make that a condition, that no fences were allowed, we wouldn't be opposed.
No, you're not, yeah. That, there shouldn't be a fence in that area heading to the back where you have the dotted line.
Right, but I'm saying, when we make that return--
Yeah, no, I got that, if they wanted it there, the rear yard, they're cutting it off.
Correct.
But you need to keep that access open.
Yep. Certainly.
Carolyn, anything else?
No.
Dan, any questions? John?
What does that make the lot size of parcel one?
1959.
1959, that's on that one, okay. I thought that was on the next lot.
Nope.
Yeah, no, that was the arrow we were looking for.
That's the little arrow, does it? We're in tight quarters, yeah, there's not a lot of room for ink.
Yeah, talk about it. Full-figure guys here, yeah. Okay. Jim Clarkins, any questions on it?
No, sir.
All right. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Can I get a motion to grant with conditions or a motion to deny?
I'll make a motion of separate utilities and--
Separate utilities, the affidavit filed--
File for separate utilities and no fence, separating the properties.
Two years, two-year grant? If we reanswer that way, we'll, we'll have to come back.
My second.
No fence? Did you say no fence?
Those are the mic, please.
Say again, Jim.
I could barely hear John on his motion.
Oh. The motion was to grant the special permit with the conditions being separate utilities, no fence-- no fence in between, affidavit to be filed, within one, I guess, within the two-year window, whatever happens for us, two years or the sale of the property that the utilities have been separated, no fence in between the easement area, and a two-year grant.
And also, no further subdivision, I guess?
And no further subdivision, just to make sure.
Can't.
So that's his motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Carolyn Marasette. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
John Frank, yes. Carolyn Marasette, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Asad, yes. So that petition is granted with those conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, Rockstar Elite, is it probably Entertainment Enterprises, Inc.
Yep.
384 Third Street Lot I-1032. This is a variance request to convert an existing clubhouse function hall into two apartments, providing two off-street parking spaces in the commercial business district, lot size 3,542 plus or minus square feet. Now, my understanding is this is a rehearing.
That's correct.
So, under 48, Section 16, the planning board has made the determination that this particular project that's before the board this evening, that the applicant's new proposal reflects specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the denial was issued. So the same finding has to be made by the zoning board if this petition's going to be heard and go forward. So I'll ask Dan Agia to go forward and tell us what has changed from the old petition to this petition.
Certainly. Again, for the record, Mr. Chairman, Dan Agia from SciTech Engineering. The applicant is Rockstar Elite Enterprises with the real estate regarding 384 Third Street. You all know it as the VFW Hall that's located at that southeast corner of Third Street and Wade Street, an existing club, clubhouse with kitchen, two-story structure. And you'll see in the package that I've submitted to you, there is a photo of the existing structure, and then also architectural drawings of the, of the footprint of the, of the proposed structure. You may recall back in November of 21st of 2019, when we initially made this presentation to you, there was some confusion with regards to number of bedrooms in each of the proposed units, square footage in each of the proposed units, and at that time, no off-street parking was being proposed. This new application that we've submitted to you has clearly designated the number of bedrooms in each unit. Again, there were architectural drawings in your packet. Each unit would have two bedrooms. Under the previous petition, it was a confusion of a four-bedroom and a three-bedroom that were being proposed, and that was part of the reason why the board denied the petition. Also, at that time, there was no provision for any kind of off-street parking. The first-floor level was going to be used entirely to create that four-bedroom proposed dwelling. In this petition, again, on the plan that I've submitted, as well as the architectural drawing, you've seen that we have proposed a two-stall garage, albeit one in front of the other, along that southerly line of the building with the proposed new curb cut and driveway coming off of Third Street. And if you look at the photo that we submitted with the application, and if you look at, you look at the architectural drawings, this plan, I think you all have it in your packet, you'll see off to that right-hand side where that first floor extends only to one level. It doesn't extend up to the top. So if you're all looking at this drawing, you see in this portion where the first floor extends beyond what the second floor is, if you don't have it in your package, Carolyn, I can give you another one. So what we will do is, they, they don't have it? Okay. I don't know if you want to get it from, oh, nobody has it, okay.
No one has it, yeah.
I was trying to figure out the stairway going up that goes to the back of the toilet. That's where I was, I'm kind of confused, Ed.
Yeah, I wasn't the architect, but I think what happens is, this is showing up to the next.
To the next.
This is the first floor. So this would now extend up to the second floor. So the best, so that toilet was like underneath the steps. So I can show you the, this would be, John, I'll show you on this. So this portion would now have a set of garage doors, and then the off-street parking. And then, and this is reflected ahead, we don't have it, we don't have it. This would be, John has the floor plan.
Yeah.
There would be a garage.
Garage there on the side, and it's going to be back-to-back parking.
Same thing here, there would now be a driveway here and garage doors coming in that portion of the first floor of the building.
So I'm sorry, the bump out in the front is the garage, is that, that's what you're saying now?
Yes, so where the first floor extends beyond, and there's no second floor above it, this whole length, there would be garage doors here, and you would now, you should see it.
Yeah, here.
There, exactly, so it would be coming in off of Third. So that's why, see this second floor is smaller, this would be garage.
Can you hear all that, Jim?
I can hear it, but I.
I'm not asking you to say whether you like it, I'm just wanting to make sure you can hear it.
No, I, I have not visualized any of that.
So, under the initial unfavorable action that the board took, and this is a habit that the zoning board of appeals in Fall River has, you know, done for many, many years, they're not very specific with the reasons or purpose of the denial. So it kind of leaves us hanging in limbo when we're dealing with 48, 16, 86, 487 of the, of the bylaw here as well. So it was, we went back to the minutes, we read the minutes of the meeting, the planning board agreed that in that discussion, that the intensity of four bedrooms, three bedrooms, and no parking was the overriding factor of not allowing this to take place in this building. So what the owner did was they pared down, this is an existing structure that in this district doesn't have a lot of use. Multi-family structures are allowed in this central business district. It doesn't have off-street parking, so we can't really do a business use to it, because there would, then there would be no off-street parking. So the uniqueness of this structure on this lot is the hardship. There are, there are not many things, or really anything else, that they could do with this structure. This is a very minimal request of two, two-bedroom units with off-street parking for two, for two, two vehicles. Greatly reduced the amount of parking required when the VFW was in, in full flux and having however many members coming into this structure. It's a good-sized structure, and it's in great shape. So the impact of parking will be so greatly reduced, and we're adding two additional spaces. So it, it clearly would be a better fit for this neighborhood, especially when we're directly across the street from the A2 District, and we're surrounded by eight families, four-unit condominiums. So this, even though this is a CBD District, I don't think you can find a business use anywhere surrounding it. It, it's a standalone, where we're surrounded by multi-family buildings. This would allow this building to be revitalized and greatly reduce the parking in the area. It could be reopened as a clubhouse with a kitchen, but we don't think that would be a great use for the, for this property at all. That's all.
So, under 48, Section 16, we have to make the determination that there's been a specific and material change in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based, and describe such changes in the record. So, the planning board has already made that determination. This board, if we're, if we accept the presentation by Dan Agia, that the last time, I think it, it was two units, but three bedroom, one was a four bedroom, one was a.
One was a four, one was a three.
One was a four.
Well, I had originally presented it as a two and a two, but the owner came down and said he wanted it to be four and three.
And there was no off-street parking. So now we're presented with two bedrooms, two units, two bedrooms, and two off-street parking with an actual garage to be erected there. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, if the board finds that that's a substantial and material change from the last one, then we need a motion to grant, or a motion to adopt that there's been a substantial and material change. If we find that this is not a substantial and material change from the last one, then there's nothing further to do, the case is over. So, do I get a motion that there is a specific and material change, or do we get a motion that there is not a specific and material change?
Lot five, I wasn't on the first.
Yeah, no. So the first one, the first one was the proposed.
The garage wasn't there, there were.
Garage was not there, no off-street parking.
There were going to be two more bedrooms, exactly.
It was still going to be two, two units, but they were, one was going to be a four, one was going to be a three.
Yeah.
Now they've changed it to, they kept the two units, both of them two-bedroom units, and now they're offering two off-street parking spaces.
With that, I'll make a motion that there has been a substantial change in.
Okay, motion made by John Frank, that there has been a specific and material change in the conditions from the last one expressly going from a four-bedroom and a three-bedroom to a two, two units, two bedrooms with off-street parking, and those are the material changes upon which he bases his motion, that there has been a specific and material change. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Second, Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? John Frank, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Carolyn? No. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Asad, yes. So, that motion that there's been a specific and material change lets him go forward now with the merits of the variance. So now he has to deal with shape, topography, soil conditions, and how we get to granting the variance.
As I've stated previously, the shape of this parcel is the shape of the parcel, the size of the parcel is the size of the parcel. We have no more to that. We're limited by the size of the real estate that is on record, we're limited by the building that's on the property, and, and past determinations that have been made when we have a unique structure that is not really amenable to other uses that may be allowed in the district, that you are allowed to find a hardship based on the existing structure and the location of it on the lot. That would be our hardship, that we have this structure that there's really nothing else to do with. When you read through the central business district regulations, I think you would be hard-pressed to find any of the allowed uses that this building could be occupied with. So by existing zoning itself, the structure itself, I think there's a substantial hardship on the property and on the building, specific to this property, not to the zoning district in general, this specific property and the hardship that it has with the, the structure as it sits on the property.
Good. So the structure itself is what you're basing.
That's correct.
As the basis for Section 10 variance hardship.
That's correct. In, in that central business district, the only normal residential use would be a multi-family dwelling of 20 units or more. So that's an allowed use, but a two-family isn't. It just, it just doesn't fit, you know, and when you look around the neighborhood, these central business district uses would not, you'd have, you'd have to take down half the buildings on the block in order to, to do something that complies.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions, members of the board? Carolyn? John? Jim? No? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition?
I am.
Okay, so we'll start with you, sir. Will you identify, will you identify yourself for the record, please, and tell us who?
My name is Mark Conrad, I'm a resident of Fifth Street, and I am the president of the Corporate Neighborhood Association.
Okay.
I can.
Saw that one down now? Did you make that one now? Okay.
My name is Mark Conrad, I'm a resident of Fifth Street, and I'm the president of the Corporate Neighborhood Association.
And you're in favor of this petition, sir?
I am, sir.
Okay, thank you. Was there anybody on this side? Yes, sir, will you identify yourself?
My name is Pedro Fernandez.
Okay. When are you coming? Are you the petitioner?
Yes.
Okay.
You can learn his lesson from last time.
God, I live in the streets, I live on 362nd Street. I saw the building, I'm in, I'm in favor for it. I saw the building, it just sit there on the market for a couple of years, and it's just been a detriment to the neighborhood, and I just saw an opportunity to kind of improve it and improve the use. You know, I purchased it, there's been a lot of, you know, because of vacant, been a lot of individuals just hanging around there, and I'd like to turn it into like a two-family and just kind of improve the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone here opposed to this petition? No one out there, okay. So, that's, that's what we've got. Have, can I get a motion to grant, motion to deny? Have they met the conditions of 48, Section 10 to get us to granting a variance on this particular project?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant. John Frank, do I have any conditions on it? That there has to be a garage, two off-street parking spaces?
Have that.
Property limited to two units, two bedrooms?
Two off-street parking, two units, two, two bedrooms. One of them looked like a three.
The, the building plans are part of your application, so those, those plans would be a part of the.
Oh, it's a dent, sorry.
But what, one of you expressly, two, two units, two bedrooms?
Two bedroom units with two off-street parking.
Okay. And that's it? All right, so that's John Frank's motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Dan, John Frank, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Yes. Carolyn Marasette? No. Chairman Asad, yes. That petition is granted with those conditions.
Thank you very much, we'll see you in a few more.
Okay. Okay. Agenda item number four, Jason Maderis, care of Michael Maderis Esquire, 447 451 Osborne Street Lot F-271. This is a variance request to convert the existing abandoned store, garages, building, and existing five-car parking area into a two-family, one-bedroom duplex with two-car garages, waiving zoning and parking requirements in the A2 District, lot size 8,125 plus or minus square feet. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Certainly. Attorney Michael Maderis, here on behalf of Mr. Jason Maderis, who's the sole managing member and the owner of JKM3 Realty LLC. And some, I see some new faces here since the last time this particular property came before the board. I don't know if, Mr. Chairman, you remember?
Of course I do.
Okay. This was a situation in which Mr. Maderis was at that, that point in time trying to convert a building, and the building is at 441 Osborne Street. This building was built back in the night, early 1900s. It's within the zoned, it's zoned in the A2 District. The, it's quite unique in that this is one lot with two particular, two buildings, structures that were actually in existence prior to zoning. One of the structures is a six-family, that's basically to the east, to the easternmost side of the property.
And nothing is happening to that?
Nothing is happening to that at all. I don't know if you remember, but the last time the petition came before you, what was going to change was the rear yard of that particular parcel, it was going to be converted into parking. Unfortunately, after extensive back and forth with the planning board and engineering, it became economically unfeasible for him to move forward with the variance relief that was granted to him a couple of years back. It was a situation in which drainage, there were going to be some significant drainage requirements, but the most significant of the cost that was going to render this unfeasible for him was the type of retaining wall and the thickness of concrete and rebar that needed to be placed along the adjoining property line to ensure that there was no compromising of the structural integrity of the home adjacent to his. There was an argument maybe that it was overkill of what they were seeking, however, he was at a point where he needed to make a decision, and the decision was to abandon that particular plan. I thought that that plan made a lot of sense. At the time, we had the support of the board on it, and it was, I think it was, it was a good choice in trying to convert what was once a commercial piece of property into residential use. So the property, back to 441, that particular property was previously utilized by a reposers' market, it conducted business there until 2010, and then there was a flower shop for a short stint. Unfortunately, that particular commercial use has been abandoned, it's lapsed, so at this point, there isn't the ability to reopen it and utilize it for commercial purposes. Unfortunately, that particular commercial use has been abandoned, it's lapsed, so at this point, there isn't the ability to reopen it and utilize it for commercial purposes. The zoning district is conducive to multifamily use. My understanding is it allows for a significant multifamily use. Here, in this particular case, because it isn't within the A2 District, he does require a significant amount of square footage. So we're looking for the ability to construct two one-bedroom units. And I have a plan, I don't know whether or not you have one there. I'm hoping that it was part of the packet.
What I remember seeing, these proposed layout?
Yes. Well, you've got the benefit of having a nice one in color, I guess, as his counsel.
Do I have to use it?
No, no, it's fine. He wasn't willing to give me one of those. Not a problem.
I think we all have. Jim, you've got one of these?
Yeah, those are the-
All right, so that was part of the package, okay.
Great. So, the area that's labeled as grass, that, the prior petition that we came before this board, that was going to be converted into a parking area. That's no longer the situation. The parking area that exists on the property are five different parking spaces. I'm sure that we could have indicated that that would have been utilized by the expansion of what we're trying to do here with the single-family, but that would be somewhat disingenuous to tell the board-
But it's the same parking that was used with 441 as the commercial use.
It was.
So nothing's happening, the grass is staying, we're not losing any grass and towering over.
That's right.
So the building, the, the rectangular building at 441 is what you want to convert?
That's correct.
And we're going to put a new roof on it, so it's going to be peaked. It's going to have a pitched to instead of the flat roof.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Okay. I wasn't, I wasn't up to, excuse me?
Is it going to be the same commercialization, or are you adding it, or is it going to be the same?
The same footprint, the footprint is not changing.
Is the building going down, and a new building going up? You're rehabbing the existing structure.
Correct.
So nothing is going outside of the four walls that are there?
Absolutely not.
The roof's coming down-
Except the roof, the ridge line's going to change. Instead of flat, we're going to have a pitched roof.
If I can, I can show you this rendition here-
There you go.
That's what we saw, that's what I'm thinking's going to happen.
Yes, yes.
The three doors through me, though.
It's two, two garages, oh, three doors, and one is for the basement.
Okay.
I guess it's for a common basement, so they can utilize-
I just, I just was trying to figure out what the third door was for.
There's also back aggressors on the other side.
That's fine.
So, basically, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, there's going to be two one-bedroom units, and there are going to be two garages. One garage for each of the units. Unfortunately, under the zoning bylaw, we're required to have two parking units, I mean, two parking spaces for each unit. What we are going to do is, if you look at the current curb on this particular plan, he's going to add to the curb an additional 16 feet of curbing, which will provide for two additional spaces of parking, but it's on-street parking.
On-street. You're adding curbing, so we got two on-street parking.
On-street parking. So it's highly likely that these are going to be individuals that are going to be living here, not family members, given it's a one, it's not families, if you will, given that it's only a one-bedroom unit. Highly likely it's only going to be one car anyway, but in the event there's any spillover, there will be two additional spaces on that street. It is somewhat congested of a roadway. It does have a significant topographical change between the area in which this property is located, and if you just go south of it a bit, it, it rises quite, quite significantly.
So is the new curb in front of the building, or in front of the parking area?
No, it's in front of the building.
In front of the building?
Right in front of-
So then just to have that parking?
Yes.
These, these five spaces continue, they're adding some curbing here, so now you've added two on-street parking.
So, I think, I can always answer any questions you folks may have about those specifics, but I'll get to the, at this point, in the interest of time, I'll get right to the 48, Section 10 analysis, if you will. This, this particular property, we would argue, is certainly unique. You look at the fact that it's got two structures, the fact that the commercial structure, or the historical use of the structure is commercial use, and its location to so close to the property line, and given where it's located in relation to the property line, in a corner of two streets, certainly creates a unique situation that applies to this particular lot, but doesn't generally apply to the neighborhood in general. In addition, with regard to the hardship, the property's been utilized historically, historically as a commercial property. Commercial use is not a use that's allowed within the A2 District. It's sing, it's, there are some other uses, but they're very limited beyond multifamily use. He's seeking to have it stick with and continue with just a single-family use, but two separate units. We're suggesting that if it's not used for single-family use, there's really not any other use that this property could be utilized. When I say the property, this particular structure. It's a situation where the structure provides him very limited uses. In order for him to be able to reopen as the commercial store that it was used in the past, I believe it was a grocery convenience-type store in the past, that would require a variance, and I think that that would be certainly a lot more intrusive to the neighborhood, given that it is very limited in parking, given the, the width of the street, the amount of homes that are on that street. Certainly a commercial use, I think, would have a lot more vehicle traffic than residential use, if you will, especially with limiting it to a one-bedroom apartment. And with regard to the substantial detriment to the public good, I would suggest that, given that he has five parking spaces on that property, although they are utilized by the six-family residents, they could also be utilized by this particular proposed use, which are the two units. Given the, the new curb cut, I mean, the new curb that he's going to add to the, where there is now a curb cut, he's going to add an additional 16 feet, I could argue that 16 feet is significant for almost a car and a half to two cars to utilize that particular area, that that would certainly not be any more detrimental to the neighborhood than what the prior use was for the property. I'm here to answer any questions. Mr. Jason Maderis is here. We share the same last name, we're not related, but he had me represent him the last time. I think we were able to persuade the board and explain to the board what it was he was trying to do. I think the board found that, and I understand that you're not bound by that decision. You look at these on a case-by-case basis, but that was certainly a much more intrusive or much more dense-type use than what he's doing now. Mind you, he would have had more parking available to him, but it was certainly a two-bedroom unit, and it only had one-car garage on those as well. Unfortunately, to actually utilize the rear of that yard, he was going to also increase the impervious surface. We're not doing that, so we don't need to request that type of relief on this particular petition. It would have been nice to create more off-street parking for that entire parcel, being the, the six-family and the two, but it was just not economically feasible.
Thank you for your presentation. That was good. Okay. So, we have this building that wants to get converted, one-bedroom, two units, one-bedroom each, adding some curbing to add two off-street parking. Everything remains the same. It's in an A2 District, so the use is going from what was a non-conforming use to a, to a conforming use with residential use. It's there in the A2 District. So, can I get, any discussion on this particular project, Dan?
No.
Carolyn?
No.
John? Jim? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Can I get a motion, this is a variance, can I get a motion to grant this petition, maybe with some conditions, that they be limited to the two one-bedroom units, no further subdivision? They're together, so we don't have to really care about that. Utilities, whether it gets it independently-
It does.
Yeah, I know, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to muddy the waters by asking for a motion to talk about separate utilities that lays the groundwork to have them separate, because I don't want you coming back and saying, I shouldn't say "I don't want," but I think the board should be considering a way in the groundwork to have you come back for a variance to split the two lots. It should all stay as one, as two additional units to the 447-451 Osborne Street. So that's my, those are my recommendations to the board. I don't get a motion to grant with those conditions, motion to deny. What do you want to do?
I'll make a motion to grant with those conditions.
Motion to grant by Dan Dupere with those conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Dan Dupere, yes. Carolyn Marasette, yes. John Frank, yes. Jim Cockens?
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Assad, yes. That petition is granted with those conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck, sir. No further subdivision, and two, two units, one bedroom. No, the adding of the curbing.
Yes.
They were adding curbing, so they get more on-street parking.
We'll accept that as a condition, you can make that a condition.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is something I can't listen to, so Attorney Marasette's the one who's going to chair that part of it. I'll leave the room.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you. Haven't seen you in a while.
Good to see you.
Carolyn? District Court, still at Far River?
Can I go back? I'm not moving.
That's a period, I think, I suppose, but you still there? Haven't seen you in a while, good to see you.
Good to see you. See you later. Now, here, agenda item number five. South Beacon, the west side of South Beacon Street, Lot H-6, portion of Lot 13, a special permit request to construct 16 condo units in the CMD District, lot size 51,874 square feet.
Good evening. For the record, Matthew Burke, I'm an attorney in the city of Far River, I have an office at 120 Pursey Street. I represent the petitioner, South Beacon LLC. I believe our plan has this planned. Basically, in a nutshell, this project, if you notice Lot Z, which is 51,874 feet, that's the project, there's going to be a donation to the city of about 25,881 feet, based on this project. Oh, I'm sorry. As you see on the plan, that donation of 25,881 square feet, maybe larger, maybe smaller, depending on how big the catch basin's going to be, there's going to be a catch basin on Lot Z, so if it's a little smaller, donation will be a little bigger, and vice versa. That'll probably be decided by the planner and Mr. Ferlin from the Water Department. This parcel also abuts another four-acre parcel that was donated to the city back in 2017, I believe. I didn't represent the petitioner, I believe it was at the end of 2017, which transferred about four, four-plus acres and some water rights. This parcel will abut that parcel, this parcel will allow access to that parcel, I don't want to say the parcel's landlocked, but there's an eight-foot access easement on the property, this will allow basically road access. This project consists of about, it's going to consist of 16 units, it'll have 32 parking spots, it'll have 16 garages. The, the original plan, I'm not sure if that's part of the record, we're going to have two off-street, two parking spots for each condo. My client revamped the planning design of this, so each condo will have a garage with a parking spot and a parking spot designated for each condo. So a total of 16 units, 32 parking spaces. The abutters in this area, you really have to view this project to appreciate the project. You have Duro to the east, that's a mill that's been closed for, I don't know how many years now. To the west, you have, you're going to have about 500 feet of vegetation before the parcel that's going to be donated to the city. To the north is the Furman Company, I believe it goes by the, an LLC at this point, they're in favor of the project. They also have a P&amp;S agreement with my client for the 10-foot vegetation strip along the side of that property. And then Duro is also to the west. It's, right now it's just a, I would call it a dilapidated parking lot. As everybody here knows, that the criteria for the special permit is far less stringent than those in the application for the variance, I would suggest to this board that this project would not detract from the purpose or the intent of the zoning ordinance. It's not noxious in the CMD District. If not allowed, the petitioner would be denied reasonable use of his property. And most, I think most importantly here, the project would not be detrimental or adversely affect the neighborhood. And once again, this neighborhood is, I would suggest, Duro's behind it, to the left of it is Duro, in front of it's going to be this large vegetation patch, and to the right is a Furman, it's a construction company, I believe they employ 40 employees. It's, it's a space building, they're directly to the, they would be directly to the north. Parking would not be an issue, there would be one parking garage spot, there would be one other spot designated for that condo. Aesthetically, I would suggest it would be a plus to the neighborhood, I would suggest it'd be a bonus to the city, there'd be another donation of land, they'd have more land, more access to the four acres that they already own. And once again, I, I think you really have to visit this, this area to appreciate this project. Answer any questions that the board has?
Attorney Burke?
Yes.
This board has been advised that work was constructed or started on this site without appropriate approval or permission, and that a cease and desist order was put on the petitioner, and also by the Conservation Commission, they also issued an enforcement order directing to work to cease. And then on August 12th, the work did stop, but then work started up again on August 14th without the appropriate permission or approval. I'm concerned about that, and I'd like an explanation. I'm not certain how we can, you know, take for value anything the petitioner is asserting when it's in violation of cease and desist. So could you, if you're aware of this, could you explain it?
I am not aware of that.
Okay. This, the board is aware of that, so that is something-
And could you repeat that, when the board was made aware of this?
The board was made aware of it, I believe, last week. I believe the building, building inspector went out and observed that work had been started on the property, specifically clearing, grading, excavation, and no required license had been obtained first.
I'm unaware of that. Well, based on that, I guess I'd request that the board table it, so I can get some further information for the board.
Okay. Do any members of the board have questions about the motion to table?
No, Madam Chairman, I, I agree with that, that direction at this point in time. If we're going to pursue it tonight, I think that would be totally inappropriate.
Jim Cockens, any input?
No.
Dan? Okay.
And could I just ask one question of the board? That was made on August 14th by the-
I believe on August, on August 12th, the city inspector visited the site and discovered activity was going on, but without having approval or licenses. Then on August 12th, a cease and desist order was issued. In addition, the Conservation Commission issued an enforcement order directing work in any protected wetlands area adjacent to it to cease.
And would this have been specifically in regards to Lot Z?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes. So, and despite those orders, work resumed on August 14th. You've made him, you're asking this board to table the motion, we'll take a vote on that. Is, is anybody here in favor of tabling the motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
All those in favor? John Frank?
Aye.
Dan Dupere? Jim Cockens?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And then I vote yes as well.
Is there any paperwork I can receive from the clerk? If she has it, if not, it might be a deal, we can retrieve it.
I can email you the cease and desist and the approval tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, is there a question?
Just, I didn't know, I mean, I know you're tabling this, but is there still an opening opportunity for, for the reason why I'm here as a public, or?
We're not going to hear the merits of the petition tonight, sir. It's being tabled before we consider it. The board wants information as to why work resumed after cease and desist was issued. So we're not actually considering the merits tonight. If this petition is brought before, so it'll have to be advertised again, and at that If this petition is brought before, so it'll have to be advertised again, and at that point, I would encourage you to come back if you have an input, any input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's tabled to a certain date, right?
I'm sorry? Oh.
You have to pay a fee to table it, but it'll be the next week.
At the request of the petitioner...
Okay, sir, just wait a minute.
At the request of the petitioner, it's tabled to date certain, September 17th is the next zoning board meeting that they can be put on.
Okay.
And that wouldn't be re-advertised, but abutters would be re-notified, and it would be published record when the agenda gets posted.
Did you hear that, sir?
I did.
Okay. So I would encourage you to return on September 17th.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe if somebody could get our chairman to turn that...
Wait a minute, I don't know. Which one do you got?
Number six. ELBK.
Oh, you, I thought you had the other one for Roger too. That's why I hesitated coming back in. Agenda item number six, ELBK Realty Trust, care of Brian Barrera, trustee. 2547, 2549 South Main Street, Lot B14N7. Variance request to subdivide lots B14 and B17 into three lots, leaving the existing three-family on one lot, leaving existing five-family on a second lot, and creating a third conforming, buildable lot, waiving requirements in the BL district. Good evening. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, for the record, my name is Jeff Tallman from Sitech Engineering. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here on behalf of the petitioner, ELBK Realty Trust, who owns the property at 2547, I'm sorry, 2547, 2549 South Main Street. The property is shown as map, as, I'm sorry, as lots four and seven on map B1. It's located at the southeast corner of South Main Street and Summit Street. The property currently has an area of 29,186 square feet, with 100 feet of frontage on South Main Street, and an additional 80.7 feet of frontage on Summit Street. The property is located in the local business zoning district, which allows residential use up to three units, which would require a lot area of 5,000 square feet, plus an additional 1,500 square feet per unit, and a frontage of 50 feet. As you stated, there are currently two structures on the property. There's a three-family, which has an address of 2547, 2549, South Main Street, and also a five-family with an address of 2541, 2543, South Main Street. According to the assessors' records, both these structures were built in around 1920. So the petitioner is requesting relief from the dimensional requirements in the local business zoning district. We are seeking to divide the property into three lots. Lot one would have 8,024 square feet, with 75 feet of frontage on South Main Street. That lot would encompass the five-family dwelling that's currently on the property.
And seven off-street parking spaces?
That's correct.
Is that that number seven, and that's what I count?
Yes, yes. That would be correct. That would be for the five-family.
So Lot number one is the five-family with the seven off-street parking spaces?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Lot number two would be the 9,515-square-foot parcel. This one's a little unique. It has 25 feet of frontage on South Main Street, and an additional 30.7 feet of frontage on Summit Street. Lot three would be a new...
That one has six off-street parking spaces.
That one, correct. Yep, has the six off-street parking spaces located on the west side of the property. Lot three would be a new lot that would be created, that would have 11,648 square feet and 50 feet of frontage on Summit Street, which would render it a conforming lot.
Complies in all respects to the BL district with the maximum, I guess, coverage on that. Could be three units.
That's correct. That's correct. So, I mean, the...
So Jim? Oh, I don't know, somebody said something. Was that you, Jim?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please continue, Jim.
So as you stated, there would be 13 off-street parking spots that would be part of this project. There is an existing parking area behind, into the side of these existing dwellings now. There's no delineation as to parking arrangements. I've looked at historical images, Google images of the property. You know, at any one time, the maximum number of cars I saw in there was five, but those were all taken during the day. I would imagine you could maybe squeeze 10 cars on this existing parking area. So what we're looking to do is kind of reconfigure the parking area to provide the 13 spots that we're showing on the plan. As part of that, we would be eliminating the parking area behind the existing three-family dwelling to create a little bit of a yard area. The parcel, again, has sufficient frontage and area for three lots. However, the shape of the existing lots creates a hardship for the owner, because there is, the frontage for Lot Two is broken, and the requirement for frontage was, would be unbroken. It does have the 50 feet, but it's, you know, part of it on South Main and the other part on Summit Street. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Can you tell me when the property was acquired? It's blank on the petition.
Oh, I'm sorry, the property has been in the family since, I believe, 1953.
Okay. And the other question I had, if you could just address the hardship, the way the petitioner reads that the shape of the property prevents the petitioner from realizing the full potential of the property, I mean, I read that as not realizing the full potential just means not making as much of a profit. So why couldn't you just have two lots to have it, as opposed to three?
Well, again, there's sufficient area and frontage for three. Well over the required area, and actually well over the required frontage. It's just that the way the frontage, the configuration of the lot breaks the frontage in such a manner that we can't comply with the 50 feet of frontage for each lot shown.
And I guess you got that dinosaur lot, Lot number three, that dinosaur-shaped lot in the three, that was being totally underutilized and not accessible from Lots 1 and 2, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. I didn't mean it to Carolyn, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
Caught up in the... Anyone else? Dan Dupere? John?
Is that, I missed this lot in the back here. The lot in the back is, from that street, there's a really drop. There's an elevation change that's pretty substantial back there, right?
Correct.
Is that what we're looking at?
Jim Cockens, anything? Okay. Are the, do you know if there's anything on the five-family, the three-family? So we can, if we grant it, similar to the special permits when we separate the two lots, separate utilities, separate, do you know?
The sewer is separate coming out of each dwelling, but it does combine in the parking area in the back before going out onto Summit Street. So that would have to be separated.
Okay. So if we grant it, it has to, I'm just making sure that you understand that if we grant it, the condition may be, the board may say that we want separate utilities, and I'm looking just at Main Street and Summit Street, looking at where they may be combined, but if they're, if they're not separated, you're going to have to separate them?
Yes.
Are you planning to put a fence in between any of the lots?
No.
If we grant, Carolyn, we can put a stipulation, no fence, to avoid any of that nonsense, because it is kind of tight between that five-family and the three-family. Is there anyone here, anything else, members of the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, who's yes?
Yes, my name is John Zach. I live on the corner of South Main and Summit Street.
Oh, you're an audio guy. That's how come I don't see you. I'm sorry, Mr. Zach, go ahead.
Yes, well, modern technology.
No, no, it's okay, but I'm looking, okay. Go ahead, it's all yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I've lived in this lot, around this lot, over 30 years. And my neighbor, who purchased the house just on the opposite side of me, down the street, just a little ways on Summit, is in agreement with me that putting in a house at this point, or breaking up the lot into this configuration, is really not conducive to the area. I'm sorry to say, but it would be like having a, if there was ever a fire back there, it would be utterly chaos in order to try to get to the back house, going through a driveway, of course, that would be there for the occupants that are now there. Believe me, at the bottom of my property is a fire hydrant, and trust me, the water pressure is not that great.
Sir, can I have your address again, please, Mr. Zach?
Yes, 2527, South Main.
2527, okay. You're right on the corner, I see it.
Yes, I am. And as I was saying, that between cars and parking, yeah, there's probably quite a few parking places over there, but there are many times when it's full. And if that was to go away, that would mean off-street parking, and I don't think with the Montessori school across from us, which is up for sale, if they turn that into apartment complex, there will be no room around this area.
Maybe I'm missing something, but they're proposing 13 off-street parking spaces. Did you get, I...
Yes, there are that there now.
No, no, I just want to make sure, because you're talking about parking, and I'm saying, I'm looking at it, and I'm saying I've got seven associated with one lot, and six associated with the other, and the other one is just a conforming lot, which meets all the zoning requirements of the area.
It's almost one large parking lot.
I understand. But maybe Mr. Tallman would like to respond?
Yeah, and I'd like to add, the newly created Lot, Lot Three, would have a separate driveway and a separate parking area from the existing five-and-three-family dwelling?
I understand that. You would have to go right near the Dumas family's property in order to put another driveway there for that one particular section of a house.
That's correct, but that's what would be done?
Yes, I understand, that would have to be done. And I'm just saying that that would leave very little property frontage, if you will, between houses and everything. That is why I am, and my neighbor is also in agreement that the lots should not be broken up.
Mr. Zach, did you, have you seen the plan?
Yes, I do, I have it in front of me.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're looking at the same thing. So on Main Street, nothing is really changing there, other than just a shift of the property lines. On Summit Street, again, the boundary line between you and the property doesn't change. There is a parking lot, both parking lots are allocated to the different lots, and Lot number three has the required 50-foot frontage that's required in the area, and then it has 11,648 square feet associated with the entire lot. Maybe, I'm just going to ask Mr. Tallman if he knows the distance between that, the neck of the dragon there?
20 feet.
So it's a 20-foot wide access to get to the back of the property. Okay.
Can I join in? I'm Catherine Zach.
Yes, woman, Mr. Zach, I'm not going to have this young lady, who I can't see, but can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name's Catherine Zach, and I'm the wife of John Zach.
No wonder Mr. Zach was quiet.
But I also don't know if you realize that the frontage for South Main Street and Summit Street both have walls to them. They're not a direct drive access to the properties. They have at least a five-stair stairway in the front of the houses on South Main Street, and the only access off of Summit Street currently is that one driveway that's there.
Okay, we'll have Mr. Tallman address that, because I think that's what they were praying, in easement, to take care of all the parking. So let Mr. Tallman answer that.
We are not proposing any changes out on South Main Street. We're just obviously putting in the division line between the two dwellings, but physically not, we're not making any changes out on South Main. On Summit Street, the new driveway would have to come where that small retaining wall is. I would estimate it's about three to four feet high, somewhere in that range, but we have the 50 feet... We have the 50 feet of frontage there. In order to, you know, kind of grade out the way we have to, to get a driveway in, I don't anticipate that being an issue. It's really not, it's not a huge wall by any means. And if need be, we can put in wing walls going up the side of the driveway to, until we get up to the way...
No, if it gets granted, it's going to be subject to site plan review anyway, but... Wait a minute, is there anyone else opposed? Ms. Zach, is that, is that all you had to answer, to give us?
Well, that and the lot that's going to be very much in the back, which is Lot...
Lot number three.
Three?
Yes.
Lot number three, that would be the only access to that, all the way back there. And we already have that type of a situation on South Main Street across from us, and there is much controversy between those two neighbors, now that those are not family neighbors. So you're asking all of these people that may be living on all of these lots, that they're all going to be getting along, and there's not going to be arguments waking us up for two and three hours during the evenings, as somebody's not agreeable to a party or a situation going on. You're asking for a lot of people to be living in a situation where they don't have direct access. They have to be going by other people's properties to get to their homes.
All right. If I, go ahead, Mr. Tallman.
I would just say that the situation that she's referring to is the existing situation on the site, with the common parking area in the back. So that's not going to change. We're just going to clean that up by reconfiguring the parking area and clearly identifying the parking spots, and assigning them to each particular dwelling.
Lot number one and Lot number two, I mean, that structure doesn't change other than moving of lines. Nothing, nothing physical is happening there.
That's correct.
Lot number three, I don't know, and I just mentioned, just looking at the square footage and the conformity of the lot, that mathematically it yields that a maximum of three units can be built there. I don't know if that's what they're planning on doing, three units or a single family or, but mathematically and under the ordinance, what that lot can support is up to three units on there. That's the maximum allowed by the ordinance, that's the maximum allowed by the square footage. I mean, that's just what the lot is. But I don't know if there's anything from Mr. Tallman from the, whether or not he knows that it's not, it's going to be a one-family, or it's going to be a two-family, or a three-family, or, I don't know the answer to that, and that's not before the board.
Yeah, and I'll just offer that, at this point, I'm not exactly sure what that's going to be, but no matter what, it's going to have to go through site plan approval, like you had stated previously. So we're going to have to comply with some drainage concerns that the neighbors might have, and, you know, the parking concerns, and how the wall's going to be constructed. So I don't anticipate...
But the only construction is going to be on Lot number three?
Correct.
Lots number one and Lot number two are nothing more than just a line shift.
And although it has the area, I don't think it'd be suitable for a three-family. I think you're looking at a maximum two-family on that.
I only mentioned it, just, that's what it is.
Yep.
That was my only reason for mentioning it, not to stir it up. Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Zach, is that an adequate explanation for you?
So the, if the plan is to not have building at all on Lot number one and Lot number two?
Nothing is changing, everything remains the same. No building, no construction.
Other than the improvement to the parking?
Other than, other than the improvement, I guess, to the existing parking lots, where they're going to be, what, striped?
Yes.
Yeah. So there'll be more, there'll be more uniformity in the parking?
And they're going to be reconfigured to promote better traffic circulation on the property. It's kind of a free-for-all out there.
But nothing is happening along North, South Main Street, and nothing, nothing should be happening along your property line. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you should be undisturbed by this, if it's granted. If it's denied, then it's just status quo where you are right now. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
But just like to add, that my other neighbors are also not set with that.
Oh, when I say set, I mean, it was, not that you were set, that, yes, that you've given us all your input, sir, that's all. Sometimes English escapes me.
Join the club.
Okay. There was somebody else with a hand up, was that you? No?
I was just trying to make a recommendation on that. It would be going through site plan, or if you don't...
Yeah, no, site plans will have to happen if this goes through, okay. Is there anyone else opposed, who doesn't show up on Zoom, but may be here on audio? Okay. So we've heard who's in favor, who's opposed, we've heard the comments from a director butts up. Any other questions, members of the board, to Mr. Tallman? Can I get a motion to grant with conditions? Can we get a motion to deny? What do you want to do?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant, John Frank. Do we have a second? With conditions, John?
Yes, no further subdivision.
No further subdivision?
Separate utilities.
Separate utilities?
Six parking spots for Lot Two, seven parking spots for Lot One.
Yes.
And the other ones conforming, there's none.
No fence? No fences? No fences?
And no further subdivision, I said that already.
And no, well, that was your number one thing, no further subdivision, okay? All right, so that's John Frank's motion to grant. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Jim Cockens, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? John Frank, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Carol Lamarisette, yes. Jim Cockens?
Yes.
Chairman Asad, yes. So that petition is granted with those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your participation. We're good. You need a break? I've been walking. All right, agenda item number seven, Franklin Fernandez, 167, 179 Raymond Street. Special permit request pursuant to 86423B to subdivide existing parcel into three lots, leaving an existing residential structure on each, in the A2 District, lot size 7,403, plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Dan Aguiar from Sitech Engineering. He's here this evening on behalf of the property owner, Mr. Franklin Fernandez. He's here this evening on behalf of the property owner, Mr. Franklin Fernandez, who was the owner of the real estate at 167 through 179 Raymond Street. He's owned the property for a few years now, dating back to 2010. We have a situation where we have three multifamily structures, all constructed prior to 1954, sitting on one lot. The assessor's cards are in your package as well. A typical 86423B filing, where we are doing our best to subdivide the parcel, leaving an existing structure on each one of, each one of a separate parcel, lots one, two, and three. We've done it in a way so that we can provide access in some yard area to all of the homes. There is currently no off-street parking on this property, and there's really not any room for it with the way that the three houses sit. We have basically three patches of grass to provide some yard area for each of the dwellings. The dwelling at 167 would have the rear yard area where you see Lot, the label of Lot 3. The middle of Lot 2, that's a very nice grassed area along the front out to Raymond Street that they would be able to utilize. And then Lot number one would house 179, and it would have a grass area behind it as well. At any point in time, if the owner of 173 decided that they wanted to put in some parking, we made sure that they had adequate frontage of 16 feet. That would allow us to get in a few vehicles in there now. But it's a pretty well-maintained property, nice lawn currently. No issue with off-street parking that we could tell or that the owner was aware of, so we thought that the need for any off-street parking would not be required, and we do understand that utilities would need to be separated in an affidavit filed prior to the conveyance of any one of the three parcels. That's all.
Okay, straightforward petition.
It's about time.
Okay, members of the board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Can I get a motion to grant with some conditions?
Make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant. Carolyn Lamarrasette?
Separate utilities.
Separate utilities.
I'd say no fences.
No fences. Two-year grant?
Two-year grant.
Two-year grant. Affidavit to be filed within the two years or before any of the properties are sold. All right, so that's Carolyn's motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Carolyn Lamarrasette, yes. John Frank, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Assad, yes. That petition is granted with those conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item, agenda item number eight, Bristol County Homes, Inc., here of Mark Levin Esquire, 22 Sprague Street, Lot H880 and 90. We have received communication that this was requested to be tabled until our next meeting, and the next meeting date is September, September 17, 2020. So if anybody is here for this, for this particular matter, it won't be heard this evening. It'll be tabled until September. Is there anyone here that wants to comment on that before we move on to the next one? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to, oh, agenda item number nine. Oh, okay, yes, we do.
I'll move to table.
So we have a motion, I'm sorry, we have a motion to table this matter by John Frank. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second, Carolyn Lamarrasette. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
All right.
All right, so John Frank, yes. Carolyn Lamarrasette, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that matter has been tabled to the September meeting, 2020. Now, agenda item number nine, I can't listen to, so Attorney Carolyn Lamarrasette will chair this one.
Agenda item number nine, Ashley Texera, 1174 North Main Street, Lot S1232, special permit request pursuant to Section 86428B to establish previous commercial use of the property and pursuant to Section 86423, requesting to allow a single-chair hair salon and retail nutrition store in the G District. Lot size 5,422 square feet.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguiar from Site Tech Engineering. Although it is a very small project, it is one that has a few caveats that are very interesting. And as Carolyn read into the record, this is an existing property, 1174 through 1178 North Main Street. Sits one property north of the intersection of Round L Street, directly across the street from the old fire station where they have animal control now. So when you get to the property, if you look at the photos that you probably have in your package with the assessor's card, there is a storefront that extends the North Main Street frontage, rather large storefront. And there used to be a garage warehouse to the back, and there were four, a four-unit apartment building on the upper floors of this building, pretty large structure. There was a gentleman by the name of Richard Roderick that used to have a plumbing business that was operated out of that business for a very, very long time. Where actually, actually, his wife, his widow, actually found this for me, because when we were going through the exercise of trying to get this new applicant into this storefront area, she had started renting the property, went to the building inspector to get a building permit to do some renovations, to put in her salon and little health food store. She's a Herbalife provider, so they have like a little place that you can come in and get a shake. The building inspector, albeit made the initial interpretation that it's an existing commercial use, we can change it or expand it through a special permit. Then we ran into the issue, once we started doing a little bit more digging, that it had technically not been in operation for more than two years. So that grandfathering of the non-conforming use of the property had expired. Mr. Roderick had passed away a few years ago. His son was also a plumber. The building was full of plumbing equipment, materials that he was using, selling, but technically, there was not a business being run out of that. So at the 11th hour, we had modified, before we submitted, we had modified our petition to add in the section of 86428B that allows, by special permit, this board to reestablish the pre-existing non-conforming commercial use. So I think it would probably be the proper thing to do is deal with that portion of the petition first. So ultimately, we're trying to get to the end game, but there are a few steps that we need to get through. So we don't often have to deal with things in this manner. However, I would, I would ask you to first deal with this portion of the project, just so that we can deal with it a little more orderly.
All right, I'll read into the record then, for the board members. 86428, is abandonment or non-use? And Section B, not, Section A, a non-conforming use or structure that has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protective status and be subject to all the provisions of this chapter. Section B provides, notwithstanding the above, a non-conforming structure that has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years may reestablish its protected status upon the grant of a special permit by the Board of Appeals. So it's up to this board to determine whether or not we want to reestablish the protective status under 428B.
That is correct. So again, so basically, what we're asking you to is acknowledge that there was a non-conforming business use there before, which I think that's clear. We see that's an existing storefront, still listed that way in the assessor's records as well, because they don't track the two-year thing. So basically, the first step would be is to reestablish the commercial plumbing use that was happening at the property originally. So that's what I would first ask you to vote on as a special permit, to reestablish that use. And the only reason we're going through this step, if we didn't go through this step, the next step would be considered a variance, not a special permit. So this is, this is just a way of getting there without having to go through the variance procedure.
Do any members of the board have questions?
No explanation, just the answer, Michael.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Jim.
No, I was just going to ask that question, but Dan gave an accurate explanation. Thank you.
Well, I get it. I understand it too, but I don't understand why we would be voting on something that is not going to happen.
Because procedurally, that's, that's what has to take place. That's all.
Okay.
Dan, any questions?
And this was the direction that the building inspector and I had come up with and put together the application.
Joe, any questions?
No, I see where we're going with this, and I'm okay.
Jim, any questions?
No, no further.
Is there anyone here in favor of this portion of the petition? Anybody here opposed? Is there a motion by a member of the board as to whether or not protected status should be reestablished by a grant of this board?
So I move that we grant the special protection under that section of the regulations.
I'm sorry, Jim, I couldn't hear you.
I, I, I move that we approve the granting of the special permit.
So you're voting to reestablish the protected status?
Yeah, restore that protected status.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor? Dan Dupere? Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Joe Perer?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, so now that we have reestablished protected status, Dan, if you could address the second prong, but I would just ask you, I believe my interpretation of the...
Should be 425.
It should be 424, not 423.
I just closed my book.
Exactly, 424.
Sorry, no, it would be four...
24?
425, because it's the actual structure. It's a non-conforming structure, other than single and two-family. Why don't we ask to move it through all of them?
I think it should, all right, well, my reading is, I do believe it should be 424, it's non-conforming use.
I would, then I would ask you all to act under 424 and 425, just to be covered.
Question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can, can we do that, even though it was advertised as 423?
I think under 40A Section 11, that deals with advertisement, as long as a proper notice is given.
The verbiage is correct.
The verbiage is correct. I think this would fall underneath that. So in essence, it's like a clerical error that indicates 423 instead of 424 or 425.
Okay.
No, it was my typo.
But I want to make certain the entire board is in agreement with that before we proceed any further. Jim?
Okay.
And actually, the, the denial letter didn't mention a section, so I think that helps us as well.
Dan, are you fine with proceeding as it was advertised? John?
No, fine.
Okay. All right, so Dan, if you could address...
Okay, so what we now have is a request for a special permit, asking for a change in use from one existing non-conforming use to a new non-conforming use that is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. The applicant, who is not the landowner, as you see on the application, Ashley Texera, is the young lady who has already rented this property and had already spent some money renovating it. She would like to create a single-chair hair salon, single-chair. Again, this is only the storefront portion of it. The back garage that was used for storage of plumbing and all that stuff, that, that's not part of this. This would be that front, commercial storefront area would be split in half. She, there are some requirements, building code-wise, that she needs to meet because they will be two separate entities, two separate locations. One would be a one-chair salon, another one would be a location where that she could sell nutrition products. Like, as I stated, she is a, right now, an Herbalife provider, so they sell vitamins and powders and drinks, and you would have the ability to go in and have a shake made for you from those products. So that would, that would be the proposed two uses on the property, again, with a, a single-chair and with a very small nutrition store on the side of it. I would say that it would be far less detrimental, or not substantially more detrimental, than the pre-existing non-conforming commercial plumbing use, which had deliveries, delivery trucks, clients, plumbers would come and buy different types of materials. So it was a far more intense use than the two proposed uses.
What are the proposed hours of operation?
Proposed hours of operation would be seven days a week, from 7:00 to 5:00.
7:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
Correct. There would be only signage along the building facade as it currently exists now, in accordance with the DG District. There would be no additional pylon sign in the existing parking area. The existing parking area now provides off-street parking for the four commercial units as well, so that will not change.
There's a total of five units, not four, right?
I've got, from the assessors, I think, whatever, when they say five on the assessor's card, they're including the commercial unit.
Yeah, that's what I...
Yeah, so there, yeah, there are four.
Four residential rooms.
So if you read on the assessor's card, there are four units, 16 rooms, and then it's, they call it mixed-use commercial residential. So that's what, that's what I take out of it. So whatever's in that building now, it would not exceed four units total.
Do any members of...
Five of them total.
Well, four residential units, sorry, yes. Yeah. And we'll look at commercial as one, technically.
Not trying to give you a hard time, just trying to...
I didn't think so.
Do any members of the board have questions? John?
No.
Dan?
No.
Jim?
Online, parking.
Joe, I'm sorry, let me just finish with the, Joe, any questions?
Not at this point, thank you.
Parking, I'm sorry. Right, so as I stated before, currently, under the pre-existing non-conforming commercial use, that existing parking area that we have shown to the south of the property usually stays open because of need to access the storage garage to the rear of the property. Since that portion of the commercial use is not being extended or being utilized, we'll be able to provide off-street parking in that existing parking area. The exact number, I'm not sure, but it's definitely an improvement over what's there now.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, I'll just going to read for you, the appropriate section would be 86424, non-conforming uses of land. The Board of Appeals make grant a special permit to change or extend a non-conforming use in accordance with this section, only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. The following types of changes to non-conforming uses may be considered by the Board of Appeals. A, change or substantial extension of the use, and B, change from one non-conforming use to another, equally appropriate or more appropriate non-conforming use. So it is up for this board to determine if changing from a plumbing and heating store to a hair salon and a retail nutrition store, if that change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
I'd like to make a motion that the change, the proposed change is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
John Frank? Dan Dupere?
Aye.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
And then I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Somebody could get our chairman back? I didn't have that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there a, is a letter in favor?
Oh, yeah.
In favor or opposed?
You can reopen, it was in favor.
Okay. If we could just reopen that, I wasn't aware there was a letter in support.
You could, you've already voted, you did what you're going to do.
Yeah, but if you want to reopen and read it, since...
Yeah, the whole read, yeah. I don't, it's not going to affect them.
Do we have copy? All right, so there is a letter in support from Anton Dias, North End Neighborhood Association, the treasurer. It is addressed to Mr. Assad. The North End Neighborhood Association voted unanimously in favor of Ms. Ashley Texera, ZBA, special permit request to operate her hair salon and nutrition store at 1174 North Main Street. This property is a mixed-use structure, having both residential and a business use. If approved, this business will be a welcome addition to our neighborhood. The North End Neighborhood Association does not agree with the Building Department interpretation of 86428, abandonment or non-use for the following reasons. The structure being a mixed-use building with both a residential and business use was an existing lawful use prior to the 1975 Zoning Act for Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. A special permit is not required for these properties. City sandborne maps indicate that the structure has been used as a business since 1905, prior to the 1975 Zoning Act. Number three, this structure has never been abandoned or not used. Section 86428 specifically references a structure which is designed or intended to be used. This structure was always designed as a mixed-use building. Nothing in the Zoning Act references a partial use or story. Therefore, the entire structure would need to be abandoned or not used for this regulation to apply. Number four, the city of Fall River has not provided... Number four, the city of Fall River has not provided evidence of abandonment or discontinuance. The burden of proof of abandonment, non-use, or discontinuance is on the city of Fall River. Rudnick versus Mayers, three eighty-seven, Michigan, Michigans, three seventy-nine, nineteen seventy-two. Such proof by the city would include condemnation proceedings, which do not exist. Number five, there is no expansion or enlargement of a nonconforming use. The property owner having vested rights of the structure is leasing a legal existing business use of their property. Based on these facts, the North End Neighborhood Association requests that the ZBA approve the special permit to operate her hair salon and nutrition store. With that, I believe that agenda item is concluded.
Thank you.
Okay. Proceed with agenda item number ten?
Yes.
Yes? Jeffrey Cavalo, sixty-five Horton Street, lot J sixteen, fifty-five and fifty-six. Special permit request to section eighty-six, four sixty-six, to construct a thirty-by-forty garage and pursuant to section eighty-six, four twenty-four, to increase the nonconforming lot coverage to forty-one percent in the G District, lot size ten thousand eight hundred and ninety.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering. And as you stated, this is a petition on behalf of Jeffrey Cavalo, who is the applicant of the property. The owner of the property is actually his aunt and uncle, Manuel and Mary Pinacho. I met the gentleman, Mr. Cavalo and Mrs. Pinacho, out on the property, and she explained to me that her nephew wanted to build a garage on the property. He does live in the one-family dwelling there as well, he rents one of the units there. So we have this large parcel, it's a combination of two assessor's mapping lots that have been combined. Existing single-family home number sixty-five, existing two-family dwelling number fifty-seven, that sat on a lot, originally lot fifty-five, sorry, fifty-six. And then they had an additional vacant parcel that they had picked up along the way to the east of it, which had nothing built on it. There was a driveway and a small little garden and shed on that property. But due to the area requirements in that G District, the two lots have merged over time. So the applicant asked, you know, could he come in and build an additional garage on that site where there wasn't one currently? He does have pickup truck, a boat, jet ski, and right now, they're all kind of littered all over the place, and this would allow them to get all that stuff under, under roof. So under the, the guidance of four sixty-six, seven hundred and fifty-square-foot garage is allowed with the required setbacks of four feet from a property line, six feet from a building, and then meeting the front yard setback. So the proposed garage that, that we have shown meets all of those building setback requirements. It does, however, exceed the area requirement of seven hundred and fifty square feet allowed to twelve hundred square feet. There is an existing driveway, an existing curb cut that will not be changed. This will have to go through site plan review, specifically dealing with that. We are exceeding the area requirement, so they will require some type of roof runoff recharge to ensure that stormwater management is handled on the lot and that no neighbor is negatively affected by this increased surface area. So that's four sixty-six, and that, again, can be granted by a special permit. The structure is, clearly fits well on the property, it's not jammed in, it meets all the building setbacks and then some. The second portion of this petition is with regards to eighty-six, four twenty-four, which currently, we have a pre-existing nonconforming condition of lot coverage at twenty-nine percent. This new structure would increase that nonconformity to forty-one percent. So there are actually two sections of the bylaw that were seeking special permits for, one, for the size of the building, and then two, for the amount of lot coverage that's on the lot. If the, if the existing lots, lot coverage had fallen below twenty-five percent, so let's say this back garage wasn't here, this little shed or the driveway, and we were under the twenty-five, then that increase would be considered a variance, not a special permit. But since we are already nonconforming, the increase in that nonconformity would not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity. And going through site plan and recharging that roof area will ensure that that doesn't happen. That's all.
Get off the big garage.
It is.
Yes, Dan, do we have a commitment that there is no commercial intent?
Absolutely.
Well, sir, that's, that's, if it's grant, we can certainly put that as a condition.
One-story?
Yes, one-story, one-story, normal gable roof, maybe some storage in like an attic loft area that you would access with a ladder, but absolutely no residential use of the property, no commercial use of the property, and one-story garage not exceeding the allowed height of eighteen feet, which is what's allowed in the special permit provision of four sixty-six.
Does it have to be thirty by forty?
Mr. Chairman.
The lot coverage is making me crazy and.
Right, I, I understand, Mr. Chairman, and, I mean, that's what the applicant asked me to, to file for. Again, if, if we were in a situation where we weren't already nonconforming, again.
I know, but the nonconformity doesn't, doesn't get you to put a new structure that's roughly fifty-eight percent greater than what's allowed.
Well, what it allows is for an expansion of the nonconformity, which is lot coverage, not structure.
I got that, I got it, it does. Now, the question becomes, I've got an ordinance that says, listen, if you're gonna have a private garage, seven hundred and fifty square feet is the maximum, you want to go bigger than that.
It requires a special permit.
Get a special permit, and, and the board has to make that determination whether or not it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than not. But it's just, you can put all of sixty-five Horton Street in one corner with a garage and some of.
Sixty-five Horton is, is a tiny building.
Yeah, no, I know, that's, that's what I'm just.
Again, this is on, if you look in the neighborhood and you look at the land area associated with structures, this is still well below lot coverage of all of the abutting lots.
No, no, I, I got that, but it's not, I, I guess what's bugging me more about this thing is it's a vacant piece of lot, vacant piece of land, we're gonna put this large garage on there. It's not the Baulkland, we're gonna do a one, one-car garage, that you can do it as a matter of right, you probably don't need a variance, you don't need a special permit.
Right.
This is, you know, fifty, I think my calculation was fifty-five, fifty-six point five percent greater than what's allowed by the ordinance. Then I'm dealing with increasing the nonconformity on the lot coverage, which is getting us to forty-one percent.
Is there a garage structure that you would think would be more fitting?
One that complies, one that meets the ordinance would be.
Well, I wouldn't need to, right, but then, then there'd be no purpose for the ordinance.
Well.
If, if, if we build seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah, you don't have to be here.
Correct.
But it just, I grew up on a house that was smaller than thirty by forty.
A lot of us have, right, but right now, this property is littered with vehicles, there, there's no off-street.
No, no, I got that, I saw that.
So this would be an improvement, and, and actually, the property itself is super well-kept.
Yes, it is.
Very well-kept, and the buildings have been all remodeled, it, it's beautiful.
I was surprised that the aunt and uncle let that stuff happen over there.
That's why they're letting them build in a garage, hopefully. I mean, I, I don't know what, what size that I could, I could drop it down to, I mean, would a thirty by thirty fit better? I mean, that's nine hundred square feet.
I mean, it's not.
A thousand square.
We're just guessing.
No, no, I, I understand, but, I mean, if, if there's a sized building that the board, I mean, seven fifty is allowed. Is there, is there a number that you would want us to fall under, that you would comfortably feel? Now, remember.
It's not like I'm politically slight.
Two years ago, nope, but two years ago, there was no provision for site plan review, so I could clearly understand the increase in lot coverage, how that would be an issue. This will have to go through site plan review, we will have to deal with the roof area that we're creating, which basically eliminates the lot coverage thing. The purpose of lot coverage is so that you don't have an entirely impervious surface and create runoff issues. This will now take all of this roof area from this garage and put it into a ground, into a recharge system.
Yeah, I got, I understand.
And I can't tell the board how to vote, if they wanted to vote and, and limit the size of the garage to a certain amount of square footage, I mean, the applicant would have the ability to, to appeal, do I think he would? Probably not, I would hope not.
It just, it just seems an overreach for me, that's just me. I mean, I, I don't want to influence any of the members of the board, I mean, you do what you want to do, but as I'm doing the math, looking at the size of the lot, looking at the neighborhood, and I understand the issue about, let's get a garage and put things in there so it's not just sitting on the lot. And I understand John's concern that maybe if you put conditions, then it all works, I don't know.
Let's see, let me check something, let me do some math, I'm not gonna do it in my head, so.
But that's. Their concern is it's a four-car garage that's probably gonna end up being a house later on.
But that's.
No, I, no, I mean, that you can condition, of course, I mean, it will not be.
But, but John, that's what I'm looking at, I'm looking at this thing, it's enormous. I mean, it's not like your basic two-car garage or, and I would say under Baulkland, even if they wanted to make it bigger, they want to add a bay to it.
Okay.
They can do it without.
And I, and I'm, I'm now remembering what some of my mindset was when, when we, when we dealt with this. Initially, when this was a, when it was two separate lots. So right now, that portion of the yard sits on approximately five thousand square feet, fifty-four hundred, okay? Twenty-five percent of five thousand, which would be the lot coverage, is twelve fifty. So technically, on that open grass area, this garage size would meet the requirement of the twenty-five percent.
But when you combine them, it does.
No, but when you combine them, it doesn't.
Right, 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 well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, building mass with surrounded grass area.
But you've got the merger issue, so you've got this thing that makes it all together, you've got the two.
Correct.
Units on it. I mean, I want the guy to have a garage, I mean, I'm not gonna say, no, you can't have, I'm not, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, it's just the sheer size of it that's just, it's more like a contractor's garage than it is a residential.
How about if we limited it to one thousand square feet? Basically, cutting the difference between the twelve hundred, oh, actually, we can cut it exactly. Twelve hundred minus, minus seven fifty.
No, that's, Dan, that's.
It's four fifty.
You said you thirty by thirty, or did you say, somebody said that's, that's nine hundred square feet.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to think how big, I'll look to you, Dan.
And, and what.
Thirty by thirty garage, that's.
And, and what I would.
That's big too.
What I would offer is.
Two or three doors. Probably a.
Probably just, well, on a forty, he might be able to get three, three twice. On a, on a thirty, you would not. What I would say is only because I don't know what's more important to him, the thirty depth or the forty width, why, why don't we just limit it, or if you want to, just limit it to a square footage? And that way, he can decide, do I want to be twenty-four feet deep, like a normal residential garage, and be wider? Or do I would need the thirty feet in depth and then be shallower? I think, I think he would be appeased with a thousand square feet or under nine hundred square feet if that, if that was better.
I don't know, I mean, thirty by thirty, at least you've got a square and that's nine hundred square feet and it's.
I just don't want to have to come back if he would.
No, I don't want you coming back, I want to see if there's someone.
If he would rather be twenty-four deep and, and forty-one.
I, I don't have an issue with it being a garage, I just see it, the lots, you could come in and ask to subdivide the lot now and put, ask to put a house on there.
Correct, correct, but.
Yeah, John, those are all the things that are going through my mind with this thing.
But, but I'm saying, if it's a garage, and we say it's a garage.
And we limit it to a garage.
And now we're only four feet away from the property lines too, as a garage, you know?
All of it, so you use the garage, you get the four feet, the six, we, we got all that. I just want to limit it and say, it's gonna be a garage, that's good, but what, the coverage causes me an issue, and the, the size of this thing is just massive.
I would, I would request to modify the petition to be a thirty by thirty garage not exceeding nine hundred square feet.
So we have a motion made by the petitioner's representative to modify the petition from twelve hundred square feet, forty by thirty, to a thirty by thirty proposed garage. Do I have a motion to allow them to do that?
Make a motion.
Motion by Dan Dupierre, any second?
I'll second, but I, I want additions to the motion.
No, it's only to modify the petition.
Oh, I'm sorry?
No, it's not to grant, o-only to, so he can modify his petition from the forty by thirty down to a thirty by thirty.
I agree.
Second, second by John Frank, any discussion on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, but maybe do it, let me do a roll call count, yeah? John Frank, yes, Dan Dupierre, yes, Carol Lamar, yes, Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Yes, Chairman Assad, yes, okay, so now we're dealing with the thirty by thirty on this, with the, with all, meeting all the setback requirements.
Two hundred and fifty square feet more, no, actually, a hundred and fifty square feet more than, than what's allowed.
Hundred and fifty square feet more, yes, than what's required by the ordinance, okay. So, now with that reduction, you can sup, you could supplement the plan with the proper percentage calculations for us.
Yeah.
No, whatever, just get a new plan. If we, if we grant it, if we deny it, then forget about it, you don't have to do it.
Three hundred divided by.
Do the plan go to site plan review, is that what?
Yeah, so, yeah, definitely it's gonna go through.
It's good, of course it's gonna.
I mean, like, that's where the plan will get submitted?
Yes, no, but I think now that he's did the motion to, to modify, we said, yes, he should have the, the plan.
On file.
On file with us that it brought it down.
It'll, it'll take off like two point seven, so it'll drop us down.
Yeah, that's fine.
And it'll drop us down to about thirty-eight, so below.
Thirty-eight, thirty-six, thirty-eight, that's where I was. My finger mathematics are coming.
It's like ninety-nine, ninety-nine, right?
Keeps repeating. And I couldn't, any more decimals, okay. So, that being said, now we have a petition for a garage, thirty by thirty, nine hundred square feet, a hundred and fifty feet, a hundred and fifty square feet greater than what the ordinance provides, okay. So do we have any further discussion on the garage?
My only concern is that they don't come back to us and say, now that, now that we have a garage, we want to subdivide the lot.
So what you're gonna do, so if we grant, if we're thinking of granting, then you have to put those express conditions in there. No further subdivision, garage only, residential use, no, no residential use strictly as a garage. And if we deny it, then it's denied.
Can we say no residential use and no commercial use?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, it can't be used as a residence.
No, it can't be used as a resid, it can only be used as a.
Garage.
Residential garage use, not as a residence. One floor, not great, it'll meet all the dimensional requirements of the area, so eighteen feet high and.
Correct.
Does that work? Okay, so, any other discussions about this petition now that it's been reduced? No, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, can I get a motion to grant with those conditions, or can I get a motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to grant with the specific conditions of no commercial use, no further subdivisions. It's the side yard, the garage side yard setbacks.
Meets all the side, meets all the.
Meets all the requirements.
Meets all the requirements.
Nine hundred square foot, thirty by thirty structure.
And make a condition that the revised plan needs to be submitted?
And revise, and a condition that the revised plan needs to be conditioned, site plan review. So that's everything?
No residential.
Huh? It can only be used for.
No residential and no, yeah, no commercial and no residential.
No further subdivisions, no further subdivisions.
So that's these conditions.
Okay, got it? Alright, so that's John Frank's motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second, Dan Dupierre, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? John Frank, yes, Dan Dupierre, yes, Carol Lamar, yes, no, Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Yes, Chairman Assad, yes, okay, so that petition is granted with those conditions.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Nice to see you all in person.
Yeah, okay, citizens input, did anybody sign up for citizens input? Would anyone like to address the board this evening? So there's nobody in the sign-up and there's nobody either audio or on Zoom. Let's see, new business, board to discuss granting special, so this is on the agenda. Jim Cawkins had brought this up at one of the meetings, that granting of special permits, that they should be because we have the authority for two-year grants. Is that what you want to do, Jim? You want to make it just a standard operating procedure if we grant a special permit? Unless it's unusual, we'll grant it for two years?
Yeah, well, my, my concern more was on, on those that had been granted and did not have time to execute within the one-year time period due to court's closing and the COVID restriction, so that it would be an automatic and we wouldn't have to. Do each one each time, but we're almost past that timeframe now.
Yeah, I don't, I, I was looking into how to make it ex post facto, and I don't know how to do it, to make the ordinance retroactive or to make the decision retroactive. I think maybe if something comes in, we can deal with it if they, if you remember a few years ago, there was this extension that the governor put in for anybody that had a variance or any. for anybody that had a variance or any permit that was granted. It was automatically extended for, I think, another two years or something. And that was done by executive order by the governor. I don't think the, I don't think we, the board, have the authority to do that.
Can we send it to legal?
Huh?
Can we send it to legal?
We could send, if you want.
Isn't it moot now?
What if, if somebody were to come back, you could waive the fee to come back so you could have the paper trail for the grant?
If we know what the time period is, we could do something like that, yeah.
Requesting to waive fee as part of the...
Yeah, 'cause I don't know who's gonna come back, I don't know who's out there, but if there is, then we can deal with it on that basis. They can do a motion.
Can we still get an opinion on that, though?
We could, we could get an opinion if you want to have Alan do that. So, Jim, do you want to make a motion to send it up to legal?
Yeah, I think it's worth consideration, although maybe we should research to see if there are any that it applies to still, and so we can... But I also think...
Joe, I'll get you.
Give consideration to changing our basic grant period from one year to two years.
Well, I think we've been doing that now, we've been granting the two years to...
Yeah, people know when they come in that they can be granted that.
Joe, you had your hand up?
No, I didn't realize that we were now granting for two years, because I know that we've had, in the short time that I've been here...
Well, no, in the short, correct. This, since you've been on, we were confronted with COVID nonsense, and it's not nonsense, with the COVID epidemic. So what we're trying to do is, we know that there was gonna be this window, they couldn't do anything, so Jim Cawkins had suggested, because we have the authority under, under 48, Section 9, to grant up to two years, grant the two years so people weren't coming back. But normally, it was usually a year.
I'm not an attorney, and I didn't stay in the Holiday Inn. I doubt seriously we can do it ex post facto. So I think if we gave one year, we're stuck with that, send it to legal, let them talk about it. I would prefer if we, going forward, just do the two years that the government allows.
Okay.
I think that, Mr. Chairman, rather than tying up the legal department, that there probably at this point is going to be so few of them that we can just handle them in an expedited manner when they come to the board.
Okay, I think that's what Carolyn was saying, I think we can do that. I think the, yes, the institutional memory of the board, I think many of us will still be here, so if it comes up, we'll remember it, or Brittany will remind us of this. Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, approval of minutes, not item 13.
January and February.
Meeting of January 16, 2020, and February 2020. We don't have the June...
Waiving of the minute, or waiving of the reading and acceptance of the minutes.
Okay, so Jim Cawkins makes a motion to waive the reading and acceptance of the minutes for the January 16, 2020, and the February 2020 meetings. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by John Frank, all those in favor? Jim, John Frank, yes, Dan Dupere, Carol Lamar, yes, Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Yes, Chairman Assad, yes. But I have to, I want to make this, I don't know whether Patrick Higgins is listening or not listening, but Patrick brought it to my attention, I believe it was on August 6, concerning the delay in the filing of the January meeting. Brittany was kind enough to respond to him, and the reason why I'm making a point of this is that it really falls back on the chairman to make sure that the minutes are filed in a timely fashion. But Brittany's explanation concerning what we were dealing with at City Hall with the COVID-19 restrictions to what we can do and access, that that was the reason for the delay in getting the January meeting minutes done, to which Pat Higgins understood and said, you know, okay, I understand, but let's be better getting the minutes done. So Brittany's been working on them, and I now have that sort of Damocles over my head. If we don't make it in time, I guess it's gonna fall to me or Carolyn to make sure the minutes get done. But I wanted to make sure I put that on the record. I don't think there's any other business to deal with this evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by John Frank, can I get a second? Second by Dan Dupere, all those in favor? Dan Dupere, yes, Carol Lamar, yes, John Frank, yes, Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. The Zoning Board of Appeals for April 20, 2020, April 20.